All right, we will call the order of the October 18th meeting for the city council. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republik for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Knippel? And Mr. Shaw, previously informed staff, you'd be absent from this evening's meeting.
We have a motion to approve the 9:20 amended minutes for the council and the 9:20 work session minutes.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
I would just like to thank Misty for making the changes. Good job on that.
Thank you. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And then we have a motion to adopt the October 4th minutes and October 4th work session is written.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Abstain.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
It wasn't on the agenda.
Yes, it was.
It is, yeah.
For those minutes?
For the October 4th.
For October 4th?
Yeah, October 4th. Oh, you're doing it separate. Okay.
I did, yeah. So I could abstain, basically.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
And correspondence, Diane?
Pretty quiet, so I'm happy about that.
Very, very quiet, nothing.
Very quiet? I'm with you. Quiet as well?
Quiet with me, too.
All right, done there. Questions of public comment? Public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda unless the item is the subject of a public hearing. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you're asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda. If you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting, has been called to order. State's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting. Your comments and felt as she provided. Anyone want to address the council? And moving on, city manager's report. Steve Toms.
My city manager report is attached to your agenda. The first one is the brush pickup for the fall. And there's a notice out. And you can go on to the website, the city website, and get that announcement. It's at the top of our list there. It's also attached to the city council agenda, but it tells you when it'll start and how long it'll run and what conditions are.
And it starts tomorrow, correct?
Yeah, October 19th tomorrow.
October 19th and runs through the 26th.
So it's one week.
Right.
So, starting tomorrow, one week, if you've got brush, get it out there now.
The check registry is next. That's boring. PD report is next. That's entertaining if you know who's on it. There was a letter to the city from an organization that asked for $17,500 in the budget. They'll go unnamed. Lake Mills Main Street program. She's here if you have any questions, but it's in the budget, so I don't assume there's any. There was an email from a resident about the crosswalk here at Water and Main Street. The Clean Sweep program through Jefferson County. The Jefferson County DC minutes. Keep you up to date on that. One of the issues that they were dealing with is the PACE Commission report that was in there. It looks like that Jefferson County will become a member of PACE, which is property assessed clean energy. Cities can do it, but it's easier to do it through the county, so. The ADRC minute or agenda. A letter from Healthy Lakes Newsletter. And the reason that's in there is we're looking at doing fish sticks. We may use some trees from the fall tree anymore when we do South Main Street to drop into the lake and do fish sticks. We're still working on the logistics, but we're agreeing to cooperate. I don't have anything else. Is there anything else anyone wants to ask?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, since we do have listeners on our TV and they watch, that with the brush pickup, brush is defined as limbs and branches from trees and shrubs only. So you can't drag everything from your garden and dump it by the street. That's not a brush pickup. A brush pickup is just branches and bushes. You could take that over to the yard waste center, but that is not part of the brush pickup, so. And the other thing I wanted to make a statement on to make sure I'm right, leaves are to be on the tree lawn, left on the tree lawn. Do not rake the leaves into the street because it messes up the water that goes down to the lake. And so, you know.
It's actually a pollutant.
What?
The leaves are a pollutant.
The leaves are a pollutant, so don't rake them into the road. Keep them on your tree lawn. And we go, they go around almost once a week, at least, that seems that way. So, keep them on your tree lawn.
And then a quick question, the Clean Sweep, the computer stuff? So, is, I think you can call, and I learned this because when I moved my son, he left me a monitor and two computers that are dead. So I can either call the garbage and have them pick them up at my house if I pay for it, or Clean Sweep, I think you pay for it in Jefferson County, right? We don't have one closer than the one that was in here.
There have been a couple special Clean Sweep events that were put on here at the bank of Lake Mills a couple times, but I haven't seen one recently and they never match up when I need to go. I've been sneaking over to Watertown, but.
Can't do that anymore?
Yeah, can't do that anymore.
Unless you can get there during the day. Do you have to be a resident to go there?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, you can't go there at all anymore.
All right. Any more for Mr. Wilkie? City managers, all right, the minutes, public works board minutes for August 9th and September 13th will go on file. Council business, we have a motion to grant a tavern operator's license to Gina Enders.
So moved.
A second?
I'll second it.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Discussion decision on 2017 Clean Boats, Clean Water. Do you get motion 16-10-2-1 read, please?
City council motion 16-10-2-1 directing the city manager to apply to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for a Clean Boats, Clean Waters grant. Be it moved by city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that the city council has reviewed the proposed WDNR grant application for the Clean Boats, Clean Waters Program Grant and understands requirements of the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. Section two, that the goal of Clean Boats, Clean Waters Program Grant is to disseminate informational brochures and educate boaters on how to prevent the spread of aquatic invasive species. Section three, that the town manages a Clean Boats, Clean Waters Program and has inspectors that are trained to conduct a boater education program at boat launches. Inspectors educate boaters on how and where invasive species are most likely to hitch a ride into water bodies. Inspectors perform boat and trailer checks, distribute brochures, and collect or import any new water body infestations. Section three, that the city council has determined that having the town of Lake Mills run the city's program is in the best interest of Lake. The city council does hereby authorize the city manager to apply for the Clean Boats, Clean Waters Grant and directs the council president to sign said motion and the city manager to execute the agreement.
And we have a motion to adopt 16-10-2-1.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question. I have no problem with the motion, but then, is this one where, who's handling it this time?
The paperwork or the actual?
After, now that, if we pass this and it goes to Steve, is, who does Steve give it to?
Actually Patricia does all the forms, and then she sends it to me. I look it over, and if it's good, I hit the send button.
Oh, you get to send it, then? Okay, so it's clear you will be the sender. Okay, got it. That's what my question was.
Motion second. Any more? Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And resolution 1644, claim against the city. Can we have that one read, please?
Resolution 16-44, Teratopol Claim Against the City. Whereas the city of Lake Mills received a claim from Teratopol for damages to a motor vehicle's passenger side window that was allegedly damaged on August 18, 2016, when a landscaping operation was occurring in the nearby Rotary Park. And whereas the city's insurer has reviewed the claim and has presented information to the city council regarding the claim. And whereas the Lake Mills City Council, having considered the claim and the information presented to it, may act on the claim by granting it or denying it, or the council may disallow the claim by simply doing nothing and allowing the 120-day period to which to act to expire. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lake Mills City Council has reviewed the claim and accepts the recommendation of the insurer and hereby denies the claim in its entirety pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 893.80, and does direct the city clerk to provide proper notice of this action by certified mail to the claimant.
And a motion to adopt 1644?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Wait, one question.
Question?
What is meant in a letter to the complaintant of ministerial duties?
Are you referring to the insurance company's letter?
Yeah.
A ministerial duty is something that is clear, it's laid out in statute, you have to do something in particular and you have to do it in a certain way. Trimming in the park is not governed by ministerial duty. A ministerial duty would be more likely to be something like Misty has to do something in her job that's laid out in the statute on a certain timeframe, a certain action. It's very tightly controlled. There isn't any discretion in exercising it.
Any else? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Resolution 1645, dark stores. Can we have that one read, please?
Resolution 16-45, requesting legislation to close the dark store tax loopholes used to shift property taxes from commercial to residential taxpayers. Whereas homeowners in Wisconsin already pay 70% of the total statewide property tax levy. And whereas that disproportionate burden is about to get much worse unless the legislator closes loopholes that national chains like Walgreens and big box retail establishments like Target are using across the country to gain dramatic reductions in their property tax bills at the expense of homeowners and other taxpayers. And whereas a carefully orchestrated wave of lawsuits in Wisconsin is forcing assessors to slash the market value of thriving national retail stores, shifting their tax burden to local mom and pop shops and homeowners. And whereas Walgreens and CVC stores in Wisconsin have argued in communities across the state that the assessed value of their property for property tax purposes should be only half of its actual value on the open market. And whereas, in many cases, the courts have sided with Walgreens and CVS requiring communities to refund tax revenue back to stores. And whereas there are over 200 Walgreens stores located in Wisconsin cities and villages. And whereas Target, Meyer, and other big box chains are using what is known as the dark store theory to argue that the assessed value of a new thriving store should be based on comparing their buildings to nearby vacant or abandoned stores from a different market segment. And whereas, the Republican-controlled Indiana state legislator has on two occasions in the last two years overwhelmingly passed legislation prohibiting assessors from valuing new big box stores the same as nearby abandoned stores from a different market segment. And whereas, the Michigan state legislator is currently considering a number of proposals to remedy the property tax shift caused by these tax strategies. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Lake Mills Council urges the governor and the legislator to protect homeowners and main street businesses from having even more of the property tax burden shifted to them by passing legislation clarifying that, one, leases are appropriately factored into the valuation of properties, and, two, assessors must, when using the comparable sale method of valuation, consider as comparable those sales exhibiting a similar highest and best used market segment rather than similarly sized but abandoned properties.
And a motion to adopt resolution 16-45?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
I think that this is a very needed resolution, and will we send this to our legislators and governor when we're done? Good, because it's hurting our local businesses, it's hurting our local people, like myself, because we have to pick up the difference in what these companies don't pay. So there.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And resolution 16-46, Just Fix It. Can you have that read, please?
Resolution 16-46, hashtag Just Fix It, Wisconsin State Transportation Funding Resolution. Whereas local government in Wisconsin is responsible for about 90% of the road miles in the state, and whereas Wisconsin's diverse economy is dependent upon county and town roads, as well as city and village streets and transit systems across the state. And whereas, according to Filling Potholes, a new look at funding local transportation in Wisconsin commissioned by the local government institute of Wisconsin, the condition of Wisconsin highways is now in the bottom third of the country. And whereas, state funding for local roads in Wisconsin has failed to keep up with costs over the past several decades, which has adversely affected local transportation finances. According to Filling Potholes, municipal transportation spending has declined from $275 per capita in 2000 to $227 in 2012. And whereas, high quality and fast transit systems are critical to attracting businesses and people to urban areas, yet state funding for transit is less today than it was five years ago. And whereas, levy limits do not allow local government to make up for the deterioration of state funding. And whereas, Wisconsin's overreliance on borrowing eats away at the state's segregated funding sources, the state gas tax and vehicle registration fees, which increasingly pay debt service rather than fund transportation needs. And whereas, safety is a primary concern and responsibility of local governments across Wisconsin. Unfortunately, according to TRIP, a national nonprofit transportation research group, Wisconsin had 347 non-interstate rural road facilities in 2013. And whereas, the Lake Mills City Council recognizes that our state highway and interstate system is the backbone of our surface transportation system and plays a vital role in the economy of Wisconsin, both local and state roads need to be properly maintained in order for our economy to grow. And whereas, from a competitive standpoint, Wisconsin motorists pay significantly less than any of our neighbors when you combine the annual cost of the state gas tax and vehicle registration fees. And whereas, Transportation Finance and Policy Commission, appointed by the governor and legislator, clearly found that if Wisconsin does not adjust its user fees, the condition of our state and local roads, as well as local transit systems, will deteriorate significantly over the next decade. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lake Mills City Council urges the governor and legislator to hashtag Just Fix It, Wisconsin, and agree upon a sustainable solution, one that includes a responsible level of bonding and adjusts our user fees to adequately and sustainably fund Wisconsin's multimodal transportation system. Furthermore, the Lake Mills City Council directs the clerk to send a copy of this resolution to our state legislators, Governor Scott Walker, and the League of Wisconsin Municipalities.
And we have a motion to adopt resolution 16-46?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
There's one in here that I'm kind of curious about. Where did we, where did we get the fact that, that our state gas tax and vehicle registration fees are paying debt service?
The Legislative Research Bureau did it for the state, particularly in a budget submitted from DOT to the governor. And this whole resolution came from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, which was in that session with the governor and the Department of Transportation.
Okay.
And this is an outgrowth of the meeting that Steve and I attended at the county level, along with the, all of the, there were representatives there from all of the different levels of government in Jefferson County, and that's part of where this came from, too.
Correct. This is supported by the Towns Association, the Counties Association, the Highway and Public Works Directors Association, and the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. So, it has a pretty substantial set of groups that are interested in public infrastructure.
Yeah, is there only, their only way that they're saying to fix it is to look for a different level of bonding and adjust user fees? That's all they, that's all they have? That's all they come up with?
They actually had some other suggestions, but they're asking the governor, there are three different reports submitted from DOT to the governor. All of them are just basically sitting on there, they all give different methods for funding or adjusting transportation system costs, but, yeah, most of it ends up being some sort of tax-related. They talked about tollways, they talked about some type of adjustment to car registration and truck registration. They talked about how the gas tax is changing, and so you need to make adjustments to the gas tax to be relevant to being able to fund what's in place. So they talked about a lot of issues and they've gone over a lot of those types of conversations. But they're open to anything, but they need, they understand that there needs to be more money put into the system that's currently being put in.
Yeah, I have a hard time with it because of the money they spend paying these companies to fix the roads that take them two, three, four years to fix it and millions of dollars. You know, honestly, I think a better solution would be to set a strict payment of what they can get for roads than raise it on the taxpayer, so that's just my, my take on it. When you travel to other countries and you see them do the same work in a third of the time and do it at a far superior level than we do here, it's just, it's sad that we're trying to move this burden onto the citizens of the state when there's other ways that it could be done.
The only problem is, is that, as it stands now, the burden is falling even more on the citizens of the state because it's falling on the local townships, it's falling on the local cities, it's falling on the counties, and so those, the people living in those areas are paying more because we're not spreading it all over the state, you know? And there are some counties in the state that really don't have much available taxable base.
Yeah.
And, you know, that, they're even in more shape than we are.
Yeah, I still think we'd better, be better off if we settle a limit of what they could charge.
But it wouldn't change.
Than raising the money because you don't know exactly where that money's going to go. You can't say it's going to go to the roads if they're already saying it's going to pay debt service, so raising the taxes to put more money on the offer that may go to debt service that we have no oversight on is just not something I'd like to do.
And this isn't, this isn't the place to have that kind of argument.
You're right.
This is basically saying, we need the money, what we do with it from, you know, what other options we've put in place. I will tell you this, though, you have to balance what's fair. And so you're looking at a contract, most of our contracts say, this is what the price will be, and if it's within, falls within those categories, then that's what they're going to build it for. They don't have any option. They're always searching for where they're going to beat that option. So if that contract didn't consider that the number of steel girder beams on that bridge, you know, they thought eight needed to be replaced and it ended up being 50, they could make up, then they're going to come back and say, hey, we're not going to replace 50 for the cost of eight. And that's what they do. They continually search for that, and then, in the case of a lot of the big jobs that are going on now, the state is basically slowing them down because they don't have the money to pay for it.
Yeah.
Well, one of the things I like here is that, I mean, if we're, as a state, collecting taxes specifically to fix roads, but spending it on other things, they need to be told, look, he collected it for roads, fix the roads. That's what it's for.
Yeah, but isn't there dedicated funding where you're collecting taxes for a specific?
That's what Steve said, they were specifically collecting it for roads, and then they spent it on other things.
And spending it on something else.
Now, that, that hasn't happened a lot. That happened a couple times, there were, you know, they had a lot of money at one point in time in the, in the road fund, they spent it on other things, and then a group of issues came together and just killed them. But that was the same with their rainy day fund. They had a rainy day fund, they decided they didn't need it anymore, it was just wasted money sitting there, and they could spend it on, and not raise taxes. And the second they did it, what happened, 2008 occurred and they got crushed. And, and so you have people who are looking at it saying, there's all this money here, why raise taxes when we can spend this money and do everything we want to do? And then other people saying, well, that's set aside to protect us from what might occur in the future, and it's like, ah, we've been fine for 10 years, it won't happen, and bam, first thing that happens is we get wiped out. So, you have all these policy debates and they go both ways, and for me to sit here and say, you know, we keep a very good unreserved fund balance, we pay attention to those details, we look at that, but there would be people who come and say, hey, you're taxing me unreasonably because this money, you hold all this money.
Any more comments, questions? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
No.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed three one.
Resolution 16-47, Privilege in the Street. Can we have that read, please?
Resolution 16-47, Privilege in the Street, 136 East Lake Street, Ronald Lukey and Jill Kessenich. Whereas the city council of the city of Lake Mills pursuant to authority conferred by statutes of the state of Wisconsin has established certain standards and procedures for use of right-of-way within the corporate limits of the city of Lake Mills. And whereas the property owner, Ronald Lukey LLC, and business owner Jill Kessenich of Bungo Pros Joes located at 136 East Lake Street, have requested that the city council consider allowing a privilege in the street at 136 East Lake Street for the placement of an overhanging sign on the bulkhead and over the public sidewalk. And whereas, the city manager and city staff have reviewed the proposed request. And whereas, the city council has reviewed the information submitted and has considered the information regarding the subject. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills that section one, that the owner and business owner at 136 East Lake Street are granted a privilege in the street to place an overhead projecting sign above the public sidewalk in the right-of-way of East Lake Street as indicated in the attached request. Section two, that the city manager and city attorney are authorized to take actions as necessary to implement and administer said privilege in the street, its related agreement, and the financial guarantees. Section three, that the city clerk is directed to send a copy of this resolution to the property owner and business owner at 136 East Lake Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, 53551.
And do we have a motion to adopt resolution 16-47?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And discussion?
Do we have a representative to speak? Yep.
Here, I don't need to speak, but I'm here to answer questions.
So, what kind of sign?
It's the same time.
It's just an, it's just an overhead.
That'll hang over the side.
Yeah, that hangs over the street, that's why we get it. And Dustin reviewed it, and Greg reviewed it, and it, it falls within the square footage and dimensions, and as long as it stays that way and the elevations are correct when they put it up, they recommend approval.
And it doesn't fall down?
Yeah. I don't think we ever guarantee that, but they do have to put up insurance.
Can I just ask, why don't you come up to the thing, then we can ask questions? Is this a, will it hang in such a way that it's visible from both ways in the traffic?
Yes, yes.
And that's how your oven was?
Correct. It's actually the same sign that was on South, North Main Street.
Okay. Had you gotten a privilege thing for that one as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it already has been? Okay. So it already has been approved previously but at a different site?
Right, yeah. I asked if the privilege could be transferred, but apparently that wasn't the case.
Yeah, well, okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
You're welcome.
Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And ordinance 1171A will pass to a third reading. Ordinance 1172A passed to a third reading. And actually, at this time, are there any future agenda items, recommendations? I have one. At some point, we want, I want to get together with Rob, do a work session for the cemetery in the near future. We'll see what his schedules are. And, anything else?
Yeah, the, seeing as my surgery is scheduled for December 14th, I assume you're going to want to have the timeline for the final performance appraisal set up so that it finalizes on December 1st. So that means that you and Vicki would need to work to have the first meeting taken care of at the second meeting in November.
Oh, that's right. That's why we got that. Gotcha. I said, isn't this a little...
Yeah, I moved it up a couple of weeks early to accommodate Steve's schedule and possibly with anybody else that might want to be gone that last meeting in December.
So when are these due to? Back here.
The instructions are on the front page of what's in there. I picked the date this afternoon and I don't recall the exact date that I picked.
Says back?
Receives them by November 1st.
Sold out by the 1st?
You get them by the 1st. It's good for us to know that, so it's in our brain.
Yep.
Otherwise, November 1st comes up and I go, oh, I didn't do that. So kind of get it in my brain early.
All right, anything else?
I will be leaving Friday to go up to a funeral up north, so I won't be available on Friday or Saturday.
I have a question. Aren't we coming up close on the run-walk from Tarrynina? Isn't that coming up real soon?
Yes.
And did, we had, you know, this whole big thing we did last year about making sure it's, how's that coming along?
They filed their permit last February. They, the permit was issued quite a while ago. But Police Department and the departments are scheduled to have a meeting with them to go over some of the issues.
So the problems we ran into last year should be remedied?
The process is still under that temporary use permit where I'm not involved, so I can't guarantee that anything...
Who's in charge, if you aren't?
Greg Knoll.
So we should call Greg and see how's it coming?
I would talk to Pat.
Okay.
Pat's the one that's organizing the department head meeting with them to go over issues to make sure that things go well.
I just don't want to repeat last year, and I thought we had made a way to...
Good effort to, yeah.
Yeah.
We actually did the special events permit and it was all written up, but the special events permit was so complex that we decided to have that process review done. And we're searching for an event to do our initial process review on. We've had some, what I believe are very good meetings going over the processes and how they work and how to get them together. But this one still wasn't in place, but we had a bunch of discussions at that time that this one was complex enough that the department head should probably meet and go over it. And so Pat was organizing that.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, this time, a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one E, deliberating or negotiating a public contract when competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
All right, we'll meet in a couple of minutes.